Very strange. Very hard.
Wake up, everyone.
Hello, Caitlin. Oh, I forgot that too. Okay, calling the October 11th Elementary Schools Department of Education meeting to order at 5:33. We're going to acknowledge AB 361. We are still in a hybrid format. Next up, comments from the public on closed session items. If there... Is there anyone in the public?
There's one attendee right now.
Okay. If you would like to make a comment, please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. And this is just comments about anything on the closed session. All right, we're going to close the chat and adjourn to closed session. Hello, everyone. We are reconvening at 6:02. We are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Next up, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. You guys all look so nice.
Yes.
So great to have a full house again. I believe McDowell is first.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Elizabeth Zepeda. I'm the Student Council Representative for 5th Grade at McDowell. We would like to start with a two-minute video that we would like to share to show that we... the things we've been doing at McDowell.
I like going to McDowell because I get to learn new things that are fun. For example, I enjoy learning Spanish because I have many family members that speak Spanish, and it's interesting to learn a new language. I love being able to communicate better with my extended family. I also love reading in the library. We have a really nice new librarian, and she is adding some amazing new books to our collection. We have many fun activities like the Walkathon, Spirit Weeks, and special events like Dia de los Muertos and Grandparents' Day. I would recommend going to McDowell School because we have lots of supportive students and teachers, and the students have lots of fun playing and learning at McDowell. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Hino Beva Gloria Padilla. I'm the 4th Grade Student Council Representative at McDowell School. This is my first year here, and so far, I really love this school. I like that it is very welcoming to new students and new teachers. All the teachers are very nice, and I love the murals on the walls and how artistic this school is. I've been in a Spanish dual immersion program since TK. Estoy feliz porque ahora en McDowell hay una oportunidad para que los otros niños puedan aprender a hablar el español. Aprendiendo español es una estupenda manera de comunicar con personas que no pueden hablar inglés, pero en general es una buena manera de practicar. Furthermore, the Student Council at McDowell informs every student when there are new things coming to the school. They plan events, come up with new ideas for the school, and help around the school. McDowell's an amazing school, and I definitely recommend it. Thank you.
All right, and I want to say thank you to our board members who have come and visited us over at McDowell. And if you would like to learn more, you can come and visit us and see what we're doing over there. Thank you so much.
That was wonderful. You guys did a great job. Oh, yeah.
What's the dog's name?
Victor. The vice principal, right?
I want everybody to pat me.
All right.
Thank you.
It's gorgeous.
All right. Next up is Casa. Casa Grande? Hi.
Hi. Okay, hi, my name is Emily Rosales, and I'm Casa Grande's ASB President. And today, I will be doing Casa Grande's site report for the month of October. So first up, our most recent event is Homecoming, as we just finished our successful Homecoming Spirit Week and Week in General. On the top right, you can see the flyer we had made to promote the Spirit Days and a quick description of what the Spirit Days detain. Each event was certainly thought out well by our Casa Grande ASB, and it was very eventful and a lot of participation. We also had our parade on Thursday, full of floats and a bunch of clubs walking, as we have a little tradition where if a candidate wishes to run on the Homecoming Court, their club has to be in the parade as well, just to involve our community a bit more. And our leadership class, or ASB class, had a quick pivot but successfully ran a virtual rally, and it all went well, and it was very entertaining to watch. And last Wednesday, our Casa Grande Bike Team, ASB Environmental Club, as well as Coffee Club, all collaborated to create a walk-in roll to school as it was international on Wednesday, October 5th, and it was full of sweet treats and gifts handed out to those who walked, biked, or used public transportation to school. There was crumble cookie, a bit of a raffle for Homecoming tickets, and camelback backpacks, which I found very exciting. And almost 100 students participated, which I find successful. And for our seniors, we have the Jump Start to the Junior College, which is an annual program for them. It is created and ran by Mr. Sklove, Ms. Alston, and the amazing people we collaborate with for the Junior College. And it is simply just to prepare our seniors for the start of their incredible future that want to head to the Junior College after high school. And up next, we have the Voter Registration, which was ran by our senior Sarah Thornton, who, for her senior project, decided to present in various classrooms the education and importance of voting, and to allow those in the senior class and other classes to pre-register so that when they are able to vote, they already registered, because she thinks that voting, and I also agree, that voting is very important, and that you should get started on that as soon as possible. And next, we have our SBIA Program, which stands for Student Bilingual Instructional Assistance. And there are nine students with strong English and Spanish academic skills that are placed with ELP, English Language Program, to support English learner students. The support staff meet to share their stories and motivation behind their commitment to give back to the community. And on the picture shown, you can see the students who work hard with the others and the staff present at the event. And it is a great program and helps those that can use it. And our favorite Spirit Day, which I believe gets the most participation, colored by class. So far, we've had two colored by class days, and as you can see, everyone loves to go in their class colors. Freshmen are green, sophomores are yellow, juniors are orange, and obviously, seniors are pink. And I'm pretty sure it's last, we have Casa Grande's Coffee Club, which is advised by Mr. Critton, and in this classroom, they are going crazy with coffee with fresh brewing and blending, which is every coffee lover's dream. Everyone has a great time greeting coffee, handing it out, and it's just a great way to bond people over something they all love. And this... We have Casa Grande being ranked number three in Sonoma County, which is highly impressive. As you can see, there's more information on the slide shown, but there was very many schools ranked, and I find it great that Casa Grande was ranked number three in the county. And that's it.
Thank you. Wonderful job, as always. All right, next up is Petaluma High.
My name is Kana Lowry, and I am Petaluma High's ASB Vice President, and I am presenting our October Board Report. So the next few slides are about the first week of school, and to start off our school year, we had Link Crew, which is a big group of selected juniors and seniors, and they helped introduce the freshmen to campus and gave them campus tours and just helped them feel comfortable when they're coming to campus, and that's one of our freshmen and seniors paired together. On the first Friday of the school year, we had our Welcome Back Rally, and we did things like play games and introduce our ASB class and just kind of make everyone excited to start the school year. And then also, on the first Saturday of the school year, we had our annual Neon Dance, where it's just a more casual dance, and people have fun listening to music and dancing and just, again, getting excited for the upcoming school year. So those were kind of our first-week events that got people pumped. And moving on here, the fall sports that we have at Petaluma High this year, including football, cross-country, volleyball, girls' golf, and girls' tennis. And I would say that our school is doing pretty well in VVAL overall, and our football team is currently first in VVAL, so that's impressive. And we also started the year with Senior Sunrise, where all the seniors gathered in the morning and had some bonding experiences to start off the year and get excited for their last year at Petaluma High, and even though there wasn't really much of a sunrise, it was still a fun experience. We also had Club Rush, which is something that we do every year, and as you can see, we had many clubs this year and a very good turnout. And I included some of our clubs on campus that I think fit in one of the district's goals, which is having diverse and equitable education at all schools. And so we have the BIPOC Club, which represents our Black community on campus, Circle of Friends, which is special needs kids, and they can meet with all people on campus, and they just play games and have a lot of fun together. BSA, which is our Bilingual Student Ambassadors, which is our Spanish-speaking community, and they help people, like English learners, like get around campus. And then JSA, Future Medical Professionals, and Youth Employment Advocacy are all like career-based clubs and help people get to where they want in their future. So I think that's really important. And then we had Homecoming, and our theme this year was Party in the USA. We had different states that each class represented, and the week before Homecoming, we had our Homecoming Rally again, played games. We introduced our Homecoming Royalty Court this year, and just got people excited for the upcoming week. And then we have our floats every year. The seniors this year had Louisiana, the juniors had New York, the sophomores had Nevada, and the freshmen had Florida. And the seniors won the float, which I was very excited about, as it's something I'm very passionate about. And in the top-left corner, I have all of our Homecoming Court winners for each class, and our overall Homecoming Royalty winner this year was Jack Phillips, but he is on the football team, so he wasn't able to be there when he was announced winner, but that's okay. And then we had our dance, and this is just some pictures of the decor, and the senior class raised over $15,000 for prom this year, which I'm very excited for. We had a very good turnout. We sold over 800 tickets, so that was good. And then we've been focusing this year more on recognition in our school, and it's currently Hispanic Heritage Month, so we've been celebrating... Almost a third of our student body is Hispanic, and so we've been celebrating them by having lunchtime activities in the quad, like playing Spanish music. We are very excited to celebrate them. We've decorated our halls with things such as, like, Papel Picado, and yeah, it's been good. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is also this month, and so every year, volleyball has an annual Dig Pink game where they focus on a fundraiser that all goes to breast cancer awareness, and our Future Medical Professionals Club also created breast cancer awareness posters to hang up around school to make people more aware of it. And then to recognize our academics on campus, this is the number of students in each class that was in honor roll during the first grading period, and I think it's very important, and it ties to the second goal, which is having all the required classes on campus. So that shows our academics at school. And upcoming, we have Egg Bowl, which is our favorite, our rivalry against Casa, and we have Spirit Week and our Egg Bowl Rally coming up, just to get us excited for the game. And we also have our first Trojan Student Ambassador Meeting, which is a new club on campus that allows students' voices to be more heard on campus and feel that they're more included in our school. And our president is actually in ASB, and so we're hoping to work with them more and get our whole student body's opinion on things. And then we are also hosting the first leadership conference since COVID hit, which we're really excited for, and over 15 schools are coming, so that's something that we're looking forward to. That's all.
That was great. Nice tie-in with the district goals. That's awesome.
Very much appreciated.
All right. And with that, we are done with student reports, so we are going to take like a five-minute break, so the students who would like to leave can do so, and thank you so much for coming. All right. Reconvening again at 6:29. Next item is Career Technical Education Foundation Lindsay Unified Visit Report.
So good.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present. I'd like to invite those that joined us on the Lindsay Visit. Before I start, I'd like to just ask everyone to quickly just introduce yourself to the board. I'll start. Tony Hoa, Ed Services.
Sure. Amber Figueroa, CTE Foundation.
Jessica Bergolski, Sonoma County Office of Education Director.
Jessica Bergowski, Sonoma County Office of Education Director of Data and Engagement and supporter of Petaluma City Schools.
Mr. Bonnie Napoli, Principal of Petaluma High School.
Chuck Wade, Director of College and Career Readiness, Sonoma County Office of Education, former CTE teacher here in Petaluma.
Lacy Moon, Academic Coordinator.
Dan Ossern, Principal of Petaluma.
So thank you for being here and being a part of this presentation. Tonight, we're going to go over the overview of Career Technical Education or CTE, what CTE is at Petaluma City Schools, some highlights from our Lindsay Unified School Visit, as well as next steps in regards to our CTE program. So Career Technical Education is a federally funded program throughout the United States focused on getting students with hands-on, skills-based education that gives each learner an academic foundation, along with technical skills to prepare them for college and career. The CTE programs have become much more important for the school districts over the past decade and will become a critical piece for all TK-12 educational journey that the students will be on. So over the next 10 years, the United States is expected to lose about $1.7 trillion simply because businesses can't find skilled workers to do their jobs. This is a huge loss, obviously, for our economies, loss for families, communities, states, and definitely employers. Career Tech Education can really help support that decline in the workforce. It's a part of that solution to that labor shortage. So if CTE students can develop a strong academic foundation along with real-world technical skills while still in high school, they are empowered to earn valuable industry certifications, college credits, participate in internships, and on-the-job training, and they get to explore career options and pursue what they are passionate about while still in high school, saving families a lot of money if they decide to explore them on their own. So CTE also helps us answer this question. What are we preparing our students for? At Petaluma City Schools, these are some of the industry sectors that we are currently supporting. And you know, one of our veteran principals, who has a lot of experience developing the CTE pathways, Dr. Oh, maybe I'll ask you to come share a little bit about these industry pathways with us.
Thank you, Tony. And great to be here. Thank you for the time and thank you for all your support and Superintendent Harris for all of your support with this endeavor and sharing out tonight. So you can see the different sectors that we have programs in in Petaluma City Schools. Most of them feature a two-course pathway, which means there's intro and then a capstone course. CTE programs in general have typically a three-course or a two-course pathway, and most of these have two-course pathways. So most of what you see here are strong pathways and we're looking forward to strengthening them. Some more details in some other slides. But you can see the different sectors there and there's more than what's on here. I figured there's, I think, 16?
15 in California.
15 in California, different industry sectors by which then there's articulated standards for each one of these industry sectors and programs that high schools can build that, again, are connected to the real-world industries as well as to higher education programs and trade training programs too. So it's all meant to be integrated and aligned all the way through beyond high school. And let's go to the next slide. CTE Petaluma City Schools. Did you want me to continue? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So our CTE program is funded out of LCFF. We also have a strong funding out of our Career Technical Education Incentive Grant that we apply for every year. Our Perkins Grant, Strong Workforce Program, and other donations or grants like the Sonoma Core and the CTE Foundation of Sonoma County have all provided funding for our CTE program. One thing that I think we try to do here is not necessarily just create CTE programs for the sake of creating CTE programs. It's really looking to see what does the industry demand in the next 10, 20, 30, 50 years? And are we adapting to the changing environment in regards to our workforce? This kind of shows that shifting market over the last 50 or so years of how things have shifted. Yeah, so the top one is manufacturing. And over the last 50, 60 years, you can see how the industry labor market has shifted. Like it's retail trade. So you can see manufacturing being very strong in the early parts of 50, 60, 70 ages for summer decades. And then by the early 2000s, there starts to be a drastic shift in the labor market. So where manufacturing used to be the top, now education health services becomes the top, followed by professional and business services, B2B services, retail trade. So so really that kind of just is an example of how the industry shifts and how we, you know, as an education institution, really need to recognize how those shifts happen and how we can prepare our students for the opportunities that may not even be available yet, but in the next 10, 20 years it might be available. I mean, you look at influencers. Who knew that was a thing, you know? Like you could actually make, you know, a good living out. But the technical skills that go into developing, making videos, all those things are becoming much more relevant. So that kind of leads us into, as we look and adapt to the changing environment, we're looking to see what other places might be doing something that could be a model for us, that could help us grow our CTE program, as well as look to see how we can continually improve what we're doing at PCS. So with that, we took a trip last month to visit one of the model CTE districts, Lindsay Unified. And you know, this is a second trip, I think, for some of you. So I don't know if you want to kind of share some of the highlights from this trip. But some, I think, really interesting things that Lindsay High School has been able to do is that they've developed a school, I think the size of 1,000 students. They have 18 different CTE pathways with the three-course graduation requirements, which is the introduction course, concentrator course, and the capstone. They have a very strong shared vision and expectations for all of their K through 12. They develop a strategic plan and a PBIS expectation in all classrooms. They have built a very robust dual enrollment, actually slowly eliminating actually advanced placement courses and increasing more dual enrollment courses. 25 college courses offered at their high schools. All students must complete at least one college course before graduation. And they have a competency-based grading system. And I think what's interesting is this is a district that is 100% Title I. I think they're 94% Latinx students. And they boast a 98% graduation rate. I think something 60 or 70% college-going rate. And so they've been able to do some amazing things that we were able to see and observe on our visit. I don't know if there's any other highlights worth mentioning other than what I just mentioned? Anything that we, Ellen or Matty or?
One of the things that's not on the list there is they also have a nonprofit foundation that they've created, which really drives a couple of different things. It's their teacher pipeline program. And also, that's the organization that sets up and then runs these tours for both to come and see their schools. And also, they go out to all over the country. They go and visit and workshop with districts to help them bring their school program forward in these kinds of ways. So and it's not just a small foundation. It is a multi-multi-million dollar foundation. So it was really kicked off by a Race to the Top grant and then they got another $40 million grant. And so this is a town of about 12,000 people and they're running a giant think tank, basically, of best practice. And their students are just thriving.
And some pictures from our trip. Really got to visit some classrooms and see some of the things that they've had shared with us in action, things in regards to their code of collaboration, their shared vision, and how that lives in the classrooms and outside of their classrooms as well. Listening to, you know, students and alumni speak some very powerful stories that were shared with us in regards to how the, you know, their educational system has helped transform a lot of their students. And I think that's the power of, I think, Career Tech Education is it can be a great transformational program that really helps bring in equity and access for our students, give students a better chance of, you know, a better quality of life, going, being able to explore the things that they might be passionate about and making a career out of it. So there's some pictures that, as you can see, I think one important thing that I'd like to highlight is, you know, the belief system at Lindsay Unified was, I think, quite extraordinary. The students really lived that belief systems that the adults had for them. You know, the fact that they know no one's ever going to give up on them and they felt that and it felt like it was a part of the culture there. And the ability for students to really feel that they can own their own education, I think, was quite powerful as well. I don't know if anything else you'd like to share from that experience? That kind of stuck out for you guys.
I want to say the ownership, I'm going to underline the ownership piece. To me, that is one of the most powerful things that you see in Lindsay Visit is the fact that the students really feel ownership over their education experience. The teacher education facilitators. Learning facilitators, thank you, are really there as coaches and they are constantly providing the students opportunities to demonstrate their learning in ways beyond a simple test and giving the students confidence to express themselves in all ways, including classroom management. That's something that you really see. It's totally different there than you see in any other place because the students there have an opportunity to say, this is how our classroom is going to be run. This is the expectations that we have for ourselves, our peers, and for our learning facilitators. And they own that wholly.
One thing I was really impressed by was that the competency-based system extends to lifelong learning outcomes. So something like their portrait of a graduate. So not just content standards, but students are assessed around those lifelong or learning outcomes. It was pretty impressive to see that throughout their system from K-12. So they have a learning management system that allows anybody in that system at a glance to see what students have encountered and had an opportunity to develop and master the lifelong learning outcome skills, which was also pretty powerful to see.
I think it was also a good opportunity to see how a system that's in place with the learning management system and competency-based grading practice that even by putting in these systematic approaches towards education, you were able to still see a lot of individuality within the teachers and how they approached learning. And they very much had their curriculum. They taught it the way they wanted to. But they all still kind of followed the same structure, which allows for this continuity. And you know, the shared vision in each classroom where the kids are part of the process, how they incorporate the PBA strategies as well, it's all just tied into the whole, the whole vision of the district and the program that they're operating. It was really nice to see.
I was really impressed by the fact that before this, their district was named Chambles. There were gang shooters, a lot of absenteeism. Yeah. Just, it was like a dumpster fire. And putting that together was a community effort. It was, and everybody bought in and everybody participated. And it's just amazing to compare to what it was before to what it is now.
Yeah, I think that transformation happened in about 11 years.
So longer.
Yeah.
It started in 2007.
Fast transition.
I mean, they don't have gang problems there anymore. They have, what, 93% graduation rate? 98. So yeah, it was pretty amazing.
I think one thing that I'd like to highlight is, you know, they have this idea that, you know, all kids can master the content, but they don't always have to master it at the same time. And allows them to have the freedom to go at their own pace sometimes so that they can demonstrate the mastery. And they're not dinged for not turning something in on time, for example. And they're allowed to kind of, you know, get to it when they feel they're ready or the allows them time to master the content and really focusing on that. So I thought that was quite interesting. So, you know, being able to reflect and go and visit really opened our eyes to a lot of unique, interesting things that other places have done. Some of it, we can reflect on to see if they are appropriate for us or if they make sense for us. You know, I think it's just a great opportunity to just step outside of our sphere and just kind of see what else is happening out there to really inspire us and also challenge us to improving what we're doing here. So one big piece that we're moving towards is really developing our CTE Advisory Committee that will really help us inform what we're doing in our classrooms, what we're doing with our CTE programs, getting industry professionals to kind of critique what we're doing and giving us valuable information about how we can meet those industry standards, making sure that students who go through our programs really do get that, really meet the expectations that the industry is looking for. And so that partnership through the CTE Advisor would be critical as we move forward. It is something that will be, something that I hope we can get going throughout this year and really build those partnerships with industry and as well as getting their support in helping us build our programs.
Dan? Tony, before you move on, I just want to, just want to add just for a second about the trip to Lindsay. And I see Amber here from the CTE Foundation and Dan, who really kind of helped spearhead the group to get to move, you know, to go and have that experience. And I just want to thank the CTE Foundation, who they paid 100% of the entire trip for all of us to attend, including a couple of teachers from CASA, a couple of teachers from Petaluma High School as well. So I just want to thank Amber and the Foundation for doing that for us.
I'm practicing on schedule.
Do you want Ellen to? No, I got a rebate on the lunches.
The rest of the food was lovely.
So our next steps is the work that we want to do in our CTE program is huge. And it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of focus and a lot of commitment to really bringing our CTE program where I believe where we can be. Being the second-largest district in Sonoma County, we should be the leaders in this endeavor. So one next step that we are really wanting to do is to have a CTE College and Career Administrator, someone that can really focus on aligning our CTE programs district-wide, to develop and implement not only our Career Tech Education Incentive Grant, but our Strong Workforce or Work-Based Learning, our Perkins fundings that we have, expand the CTE Opportunities K-12, ensure more students meet, participate in our CTE pathways and meet our college and career indicator targets, and work with other schools and CTE teachers and counselors to ensure our programs meet and exceed the standards, lead PCS into becoming a model CTE program, among other things. This position, you know, again, thanking the CTE Foundation, who really has been a great partner for us and who has shown a tremendous amount of belief in what we're capable of doing, you know, has generously given us $100,000 to support that position. So that funding will help support that administrator and it doesn't impact our general funds. It is something that can help with our CTE program. And, you know, I'm not sure if anything you want to add or say about that, but it's definitely a generous donation and something that, you know, I don't know how to thank you enough for that.
I will just say, we are so excited to see the passion and commitment that's being demonstrated by not only the CASA running team, who Dan has really kicked it off, but also the incoming participation of Gino and Petaluma High School team and Lindsay at the district office, youth of the district office. It's really a dream come true for the CTE Foundation to see this little spark get catalyzed into whole district participation and looking at enhancing and improving the CTE pathways here in Petaluma. It's super exciting. It's super exciting, so that's off to you as well.
Thank you.
And we have, I believe, a really strong team that can take us to that next level with the support from Chuck and Jessica Sco. Their amazing expertise and just quick responses to everything that we've asked for has been amazing, and I just know that once we get going, it's, you know, full steam ahead and we'll do some amazing things. Also, our next steps is, you know, as we start to revamp our CTE program, this also is a good opportunity for us to reflect on some of our systems and seeing if those systems are supportive of where we want to go. Things like reviewing our graduation requirements, which we'll have to do as we add in Ethnic Studies as a part of our graduation requirement, looking at bell schedule options to provide more students opportunities to participate in CTE programs, among other courses, recruiting and retention, you know, high-quality CTE staff, as well as teachers who may be interested in teaching some of those CTE pathways, looking and exploring small learning communities within our high schools, developing small academies as an opportunity, exploring linked learning programs that could help accelerate where we want to go as well. So there's a lot of work still ahead of us, but I believe we are at the right place at the right time to make it happen. So, with that...
Right after we answer your question.
I think you answered my question in the last slide, but I just want to make sure that when we think about, because I love CTE, I think it's awesome. You know, my nonprofit day job is at Conservation Core North Bay, teaching young people a lot of skills that they need for their careers. So I don't want what I'm going to ask to come off anti-CTE, I just want to make sure that we're not losing language and art and music in there. So, you know, yeah, expanding the bell schedules maybe to have more classes or figuring it out so that we still get everything. I just want my cake and to eat it too.
And I think that a lot of those are part of the whole CTE experience, especially the arts. As you know, that's my jam. Will, does this include, will the advisor, I don't know what the title of this person will be, does that include finding internships and things like that outside of school?
Yes. Yeah. Can I just say a quick word about this?
So, the Sonoma Core Program is actually yet another grant that we received from the CTE Foundation. Thank you again, Amber and Kathy Goodacre, and the whole, the entire CTE Foundation team, which, you know, really the major players in the county for this kind of work. So we're so grateful to be on the front lines with them. So, next semester, we'll be hosting for the first time a semester course for seniors only. It's a section, so it's up to 32 students, who will, in that class, gain a lot of career exploration and development skills. And they will have, there's built into the budget, field trip money to go visit up to 10 different industries, local organizations, and then at the end of that semester, which will be the end of their senior year, they have the opportunity to apply for a full-time paid internship for a year. They're calling it a gap year internship. And then at the end of that year, up to $5,000 of scholarship money. So it's a tremendous opportunity for our seniors, we're piloting it this year, and absolutely, CTE Foundation has a whole office dedicated to reaching out to local industries and employers, developing relationships, and then providing these opportunities for our students. And we're not talking about small players, we're talking about some big players in the county, Medtronic, LabCon, Strauss, La Grunitas, et cetera.
Is this a class only at Casa with the V one at Petaluma?
So right now, it's just at Casa Grande High School. Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, is that not true?
It's not true. This was actually a program that was originally located at Piner High School, but this is the first year that we're piloting new ways of delivering the Sonoma Core Program that are embedded in classes or on the schedule. So, the Casa Grande program is unique and the only one in the county. However, Piner is also doing a Sonoma Core implementation where they've embedded the program into a math credit recovery course called Stats for Social Justice. So we're testing these different delivery models, and we'll continue to expand the program.
I want to be super mindful of time and also acknowledge that you don't want the SCO person here talking about state accountability, but I do think it's really important. In response to Trustee Quinn's thoughtful question, I think, I know actually from experience that both the CTE Foundation, our own organization, but importantly, Petaluma City Schools, the folks behind me here, feel really strongly that it isn't simply a matter of more and more thoughtful CTE courses, that's part of what we saw Tony outline here, but really more opportunities for career readiness and career practice across the disciplines. And really, the state is bringing some serious parity to all of the focus we've had over the years around A through G. We think that's super important, that all students experience rigorous academics that include readiness for careers. And as my colleague Chuck will say, many students who choose to go to college will also want to get a job one day. So, we really do believe it's a moral imperative for our students for the reasons that Tony pointed out, but also it's really an opportunity, and the state is putting resources and funding and, yes, some accountability behind bringing parity between the two, and not that it's a choice, right, but it's truly that "and" piece. And I think folks like your team that went to Lindsay are the exact right people in this community to do that work, and really appreciate Tony having a broader state perspective of how this looks elsewhere. So, just wanted to be this SCO person to talk about accountability, but to sort of say, it's the right thing to do too.
Don't go anywhere, SCO person. Like, don't go anywhere, because I want to ask something about that. So...
Yes, Jessica, I forgot to you.
Thanks, Jessica. No, sorry about that. The content of CTE, I think we're all bought in on that. I'm still, and thank you, by the way, for educating me on this, because I need an education on this. I'm a little foggy on how this pencils out in the student's schedule and in the budget. So just on the schedule, you were just starting to talk about, I'm curious how the two-to-three course pathways across 15 options, how does that pencil in to a student's schedule, you know, with limited electives, if they're going to fulfill A through G also? Are they double counting? Is that what's going on here? And then the related question to that is, how does this pencil in the budget? Tony, you started the slide by saying the feds are paying for it. I love having feds pay for stuff. But then you said that this is also part of LCFF and these other grants. How, what are the, what's the basis of funding for CTE? And how do we get that money? And how much does it cover? You know, two-to-three course pathway with 15 pathways, there's a lot of instruction there, how does this pencil out?
So I will, I will start an answer to that question, but to be clear, I don't want to prescribe that for Petaluma. I think Tony outlined with the team support that that's some of the conversations you all want to have, and I'll defer to my colleague Chuck to address some of the questions around funding. But I'll start by saying this, very broadly, there will be some choices across Sonoma County around what we offer, right? With declining enrollment across the county and with the addition of courses like Ethnic Studies, communities are going to have to make pretty thoughtful choices around what they want students to pursue more deeply. One specific answer to one of the very many good questions you asked is that there are several CTE, A through G, and importantly, actually, A through F approved courses. So you don't have to necessarily make a choice between those things in that particular case. I will actually invite Chuck up here to say a little bit more about the funding and where that's sort of the state is putting, and to some degree, the federal government, their money where their mouth is to support this work. But I don't want to pretend that there won't be some very necessary conversations for this community that knows its residents better than anyone to have those conversations and make those choices, because you pointed out, 15 industry sectors across the state, three-course pathways, sequences, you know, that might not be tenable for a district even as large as Petaluma in our county.
So mostly around here in Sonoma County, we just ask Amber. But honestly, there are some changes happening that make it so that we don't have to so much anymore. I think one of the things that the CTE Foundation has done so generously for all of us here in Sonoma County is place little bets and let us see what works and what doesn't. And some of those things are starting to pay off, and I think we're understanding how to adapt those to our local systems and to take advantage of some of the opportunities forthcoming. There is more money available for CTE programs than there's ever been before. The CTE incentive grant that Tony talked about just doubled in size for this year. The Perkins grant is larger, there's, that's a California grant.
But Perkins is federal.
Perkins is federal. There's a dual enrollment grant related to some of these CTE pathways that's brand-new. There's a Golden State Pathways Grant that's another half a billion dollars for California related to some of these pathways programs. In addition to those opportunities, there are many obligations that come with that, some reporting and accountability obligations, but also some obligations around the California dashboard. There are going to be some work-based learning tracking responsibilities for districts, the things that need to be taken account of in order for you to qualify on the College and Career Indicator mentioned. There's some administrative work tied to that. All of that to say, those opportunities and obligations make it really timely that you folks are thinking about really taking seriously some manpower behind some of this work. Thank you. Because really, it will pay off. There are lots of opportunities that will become available, are already becoming available. We know a little bit now about what works here, and we can take advantage of that. And also, there's, you know, there are some responsibilities that are new and arising related to CTE accountability that we're going to need to prepare for.
One other question that I can answer, and again, I'm being very mindful of time, but is what we learned from Lindsay, and I think Dr. Osterman spoke to this, their creative use of time enables them, to some degree, to address some of the things you're concerned about, like how can students have access to so much? And tonight's probably not the night to go into how they think about time, but it was pretty palpable that they are not running a school system governed by the traditional seat time and clock. There's lots of examples of hybrid and synchronous and asynchronous, you know, custom and tailored student learning. And that affords more of a broad range of opportunities to their students because they're getting pretty creative about time.
I have a question. First of all, thank you to our guests for being here. Jessica knows I've been like obsessed with her for the past five years, so. I have a question about Lindsay Unified when you went. I just feel like a lot of times we hear about college or career, it seems like they really married the two. Did they talk about that at all, how they're able to kind of make that leap?
I wouldn't say that they talked about it explicitly, but the way it comes across is through the early college credits, they encourage their students to take the dual enrollment and the elimination of a traditional Avid program. It's not Avid, it's, hey, if you want to take a class, we're going to help you get to that college class, we're going to help you with transportation, we're going to help you get enrolled. I mean, they're, they have a whole system in place that's all about, hey, if you want to excel and learn more about this particular topic and do that through college, you can do that. And by the way, I remember I was so impressed by one of our student tour leaders, she was a senior there, and she was talking about how she was really behind in one subject, but she was far excelling in another and had almost her AA. So she hadn't even graduated high school yet. So just that whole shift in mindset around, I don't have to be excelling in all of my classes or coursework in order to get a college degree, is a big change from the traditional system.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, maybe one more. Maybe some of our principals tell us, what are we doing really well right now with existing CTE, and what do you envision now for our CTE future now that you've seen some possibilities?
Well, what's already been discussed is the completers, the three sections of each pathway. And for us, Petaluma High, we have really strong pathways, we have really strong programs. We have opportunities to be able to adjust and move to what our social needs are, what our community is really interested in. And with the work of this team and the vision of this team, it's really being able to expand and grow into, and how we can find other areas to focus on. We've had some traditional pathways that are really strong and thriving, and I think one thing that we're looking forward to is what opportunities may come. And so through this work, there's a lot of great chances there.
Can you just describe a little bit Petaluma, some of the things, highlights of Petaluma High, and then can you describe a little bit the process of...
Yeah. Broadcast journalism is one. Mr. Doster is running a second-year course, he's looking into putting a third-year course in next year, so that would be capstone. So that, and the third course is really about entrepreneurship, almost digital broadcasting entrepreneurship, where students can learn to be influencers or learn to create in that way. So a little bit away from the broadcast part of it, but more focused on the media part of it. Obviously, we have our ag programs that are strong, and the SA program, the students are out doing projects and getting a lot of hours, community service hours put in. I just met with Ms. Arns the other day, and she described to me that students are out in the workforce, and the time that they give is being accounted for, they have a system to measure it. And I'm not going to try to remember the number, but it was a really big number. The amount of money that these students have either earned through the work project or either has been accounted for as potential income, and how that's contributed to our community. Another one is our engineering, auto engineering program is really strong right now, and Mr. Benson is really tying in the metal fabrication with auto program. And he's very big on social media, if you're not following it, you should. They just recently worked with NASA on developing parts that go on the space shuttle. They, he has a, he has a program that he works within the community who has brought in thousands and thousands of dollars, along with our district support in creating a lab space with the auto shop and the metal shop that is really, it's really current, it's really the machinery, the expertise that Mr. Benson provides, and the complete focus of our students. Those are, the highlights. The museum's not CTE, but the museum is, yeah, the museum is a great opportunity for students to be able to engage in. We're really looking at growing that program again next year, including more animal husbandry, along with what's already being offered. And so we have a plan in place, and by the way, A through G for almost all of that that I just mentioned. And also, one thing that I just learned in my role now is that, you know, Mr. Benson has his students already articulated with SRJC, so those students are already working that way. And we're looking at potentially changing that program into an honors distinction because of that, because of that collaboration with SRJC. So those are the type of things that we currently have, and sorry to be a little bit vague, but yes, more to come.
Yes. Thank you, Gi. I just think we don't, we have so many incredible things already going on at Petaluma City Schools, it's nice to highlight it as much as we can, so thank you.
Matthew, if I could just add one thing. The only piece that's missing is facilities. I don't mean to advocate, but it's an important component that we haven't talked about, and as I'm working with various teachers who reach out to me saying, you know, hey, can you help us with this? I mean, we're trying to take shop classes that have carpet and replace it with vinyl. I mean, literally, because the principals have done an extraordinary job trying to fit these new types of classes into existing facilities that aren't designed for them. So I just want to throw out there that one of the components that we need to consider is, how do we rethink our facilities and what kind of modifications are necessary to support the programs that they're talking about? Because, talk about funding, I mean, there, I haven't heard of any career tech ed facilities funding yet, but there might be something out there too that we need to explore. So I just know from a facilities perspective, it's a big piece of this, and it's an expensive, potentially expensive piece, so.
I absolutely agree with that. And in addition to the facilities piece, it's also, what we're already talking about is the opportunities and creating more opportunities within the schedule that we have. So as we look forward in that, in that way, we can then enhance and grow more opportunities within our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah. So I think in some... So I think in some, the strength of our CTE programs currently are our true believers who are the teachers. And we have some strong ones. At CASA, we have our United Anglers Fish Hatchery, of course. So full-time CTE teacher there with a waiting list every year. Same with culinary. We had, I think, 150 students in the waiting list with that program. Pam Gutierrez, our Gaucho Garage, similar, almost 100 students in waiting list. So the demand on the student side, because that's how typically historically we've, we've, you know, gained signups from our students and gauging interest is through that course signup process, which happens every year in January. And then, of course, we have our computer science programs, graphic design, 3D animation. We have a T-shirt printing lab and, and other things, and entrepreneurship and a smattering of others. You know, next steps is really, you know, what Superintendent Harris mentioned is just kind of maximizing our program. We're not talking about, you know, doing a full sweep and a reboot. This is really just kind of taking what we have now and, and giving it some more attention and some more resource, which definitely includes facilities. I'm happy to have that conversation. And, you know, Gio mentioned the articulation agreements. I think that's definitely a next step. That's really, you know, in, in more lay terms, that's credit by exam with our CTE programs and our advanced courses. And it doesn't have to be a transcripted grade. Students have a little bit of freedom there. And then also just working toward, to building bigger partnerships with the junior college and in general. And, and then again, I think another key area we need to work, work on is the advisory groups. Per the state and per all the best practice, we need to have an industry, industry-specific advisory group for each one of our pathways. And this is a, a small group of industry professionals that, that really runs that meeting, and they advise the teachers on the curriculum so that it's up to date. And then, of course, then it provides an essential bridge to that employer so that we can explore internship opportunities, et cetera. So it's a win-win there as well. That's definitely a next step. And then to further expand into the program, you heard Jessica and Chuck talk about it a little bit, but there's lots of opportunity where we can have CTE and A through G, and they're not separate silos. And just again, maximizing the program that we already have in place from a structural level. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
They just covered it pretty well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. You guys, you need a break or? It's good. Okay. All right. Comments from the public on non-agendized items. So at this time, we're only.
We just say our CTE, thank you to our CTE group. You guys are welcome to stay and you're, feel free to leave if you need to.
Oh, they're already on their way out.
Yeah. That's fine. We should be going now.
All right. So comments from the public on non-agendized items. So if you have a comment about something that is not on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat. And while the chat is open, I'm going to read our public comment policy. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Looks like we have two comments so far. All right. Let's start with Sal.
Can you hear me? Yep. Okay. Hi. Sal Andopoulos, he and they pronounce, I'm with North Bay LGBTQI families, just wanted to address the recent reports of adults standing outside of Kennelworth handing out Bibles to students when they were leaving campus. Just, I think what we've, you know, learned about the situation is problematic for many reasons, but just want to focus my comment on the school district's obligations to protect transgender students' civil rights and how this may extend to things that occur off campus. As has been reported in the newspaper, two adults were engaged in this Bible distribution last week, and there's a credible report from a parent that one of those adults made an explicitly transphobic harassing, you know, statement of hate speech while outside of Kennelworth passing out, you know, the Bibles. And we also saw in the, in the article that, you know, statements from the school that Bible distribution is, it's allowed if it's happening off campus. And it just brought to mind another situation from about a year and a half ago involving off-campus harassment of PCS students, which involves slightly different facts and mainly involved student discipline. But at the time, the district had some of its outside legal counsel give a presentation at a school board meeting, February 23rd, 2021. It's on the YouTube channel, and the presentation's right at the beginning, and it was about school district jurisdiction to regulate conduct that occurs off campus and some of the related, you know, free speech issues and things like that. And so again, slightly different facts, but in the presentation, it was explained that the closure, the connection that harassment of students has to a school activity, such as the specific example of students coming and going from school, which is the setting here, the more likely it is that a school district can have jurisdiction to regulate conduct that could serve to interfere with things like students' rights to attend school in a safe setting. So anyway, here what we have is at least one of these adults standing outside the school for the specific purpose of intercepting students as they leave campus and then reportedly engaging in transphobic hate speech. And under Title IX, the school district has an obligation to protect transgender students from harassment on the basis, on the basis of their gender identity. So I see in light of what was presented by the legal counsel at that prior meeting, it's just worth looking into what the district's obligations might be here to protect student civil rights off campus and whether there are policy or other solutions that can be implemented to protect our transgender students from hateful and damaging speech by adults who again are just seeking to intercept them literally right outside their school. So just urge the district to, to please look into this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. Buenos dias. Encantó la presentación bilingüe de McDowell students. That was amazing. I want to see, I love seeing all of that. Also, thank you, thank you, thank you for Tony and PCS and the group for the CTE presentation. I'm really excited to hear more about that. And teacher residency programs, particular teacher of color teacher residency programs would be incredible. I'm curious if we're applying for community schools grants, blah, blah, blah. It's been a while, so I apologize for throwing all this stuff in here. I've missed you all. I'm also here in regards to the October 6 incident of some anti-trans speech of some men handing out Bibles in front of Kennelworth School. This, along with past instances of hate speech on graffiti in parks adjacent to schools, rightly exemplifies the need for communication between PCS, city council, Petaluma Police Department, and the community to determine how we can ensure the safety of our children, youth, and families in these liminal spaces. They seem to be siloed. I know that we've worked together really well. Thank you for dealing with the bomb threat that happened at Casa Grande last week. And I know that Petaluma Police Department and PCS have worked together in the past. There must be some way in which this can also extend to instances of harm and trauma and real danger for our trans and LGBTQIA plus children, youth, and families. I'm curious if there is places in which we can discuss this or address it, perhaps in the safety team, safety plans, both at the school sites as well as in the district? Because I know that the safety plans discuss things like fires and shooters and, and, you know, COVID. I also understand that it is extending to mental and emotional support and care for our families. And so I'm wondering if there is a place that either in the individual school sites and in the district-wide, we can explore ways in which we can protect our students and families to, against hate speech as well as, you know, fire drills. So I think you're all amazing and wonderful as usual. Yay, CTE. Thank you all for doing what you're doing. I appreciate it. I look forward to more conversation about it. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you. It looks like all for online. Is there anyone in person that has a comment about something not on the agenda? Nope. Okay. All right. Next up, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members since the last board meeting. Dr. Rio's talk at San Antonio High School, live Oak site visit and play, safety committee meeting, Kennelworth eighth grade girls' basketball game, Petaluma Pride, NAACP Ed Committee, our student board members, CASA football games, homecoming, homecoming parade, Health Sciences Club, Walk and Roll to School Day. Did you want to have any comments about any of their activities?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment about the safety committee. It was an incredible meeting. There were people, fire, police, a lot of community participants. There was one place where we were talking about who's missing, and we only had one parent. I know a lot of the, the administrators there were also parents, but I'm talking about parents that aren't necessarily employees of our district. We had one student, Mia, who was awesome, but we would like to see more students. And we would like to see some teachers in classified also participate. It's more than just talking about guns. So it's a, it's a, an amazing committee with amazing people, and I just want to put that out there that it would be nice to have some more parents and students involved.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to Caitlin for leading the Pride Fest this past weekend in Petaluma. And thanks to Petaluma High School for their wildlife museum being there. I think that was one of the best booths at the site, which are really great.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. All right. Comments from the public on consent agenda items. Again, we'll reopen the chat. If there's any comments about anything on the consent agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat. I know we have one in person, Jen Cox. Do you want to come up?
My name is Jen Cox, and I'm a former Petaluma City School employee. I was the counseling secretary at Casa Grande High School for a little over seven years. I'm here tonight as the voice for myself and approximately 100 classified employees who resigned employment with Petaluma City Schools from September 2020 through September 2022. I'm here to address the inequity and negative impact of the approval of the tentative agreement to the collective bargaining agreement between Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union School Districts and California School Employee Association, Petaluma Chapter 212, most specifically the retroactive updates to the salary schedules for the 2020, 21, and 2021, 22 school years. I applaud the CSCE Petaluma Chapter 212 negotiations team for their hard work and time during this extremely lengthy process. Having been a classified employee during this time and having served as a communications officer, I know exactly what went into negotiating for all classified staff to get fair and equitable wage increases and medical coverage. The total of 16.5% is a great gain towards getting Petaluma City Schools classified staff wages more in line and up to where they should be in comparison to other surrounding districts. When I and the other approximately 100 former classified employees were informed that one of the concessions that had to be made to come to this agreement was that those who quit during this lengthy negotiations process would not receive these retroactive pay increases, it was an extremely shocking disappointment and quite frankly, a huge slap in the face, especially knowing that in the past, when there has been a salary increase, an employee who quit always received retroactive pay. Yes, when we resigned our positions with Petaluma City Schools, many of us were forced to resign jobs we loved due to not being able to financially make ends meet anymore. We were all working right alongside all Petaluma City Schools classified staff all throughout the pandemic, putting in extra time, hard work, and some doing jobs other than their assigned jobs to help keep the schools running and making sure Petaluma City School students were receiving the best level of services given the circumstances we were all facing. As a reminder, once the initial lockdowns eased up, classified staff were mandated to report back to our respective school sites and to work on campus. We were no longer allowed to work from home when faculty were allowed to teach from home. The district negotiators have clearly shown that they do not value myself nor the other approximate 100 classified staff members who resigned, many of which were forced to leave without the option of retirement out of self-preservation. They have totally negated the work that we did for Petaluma City Schools over the years, especially during the past two years in the face of a global pandemic. For myself and the others who quit during the lengthy negotiations process, it feels as though the district negotiators essentially held the CSCE hostage and forced them to agree to negotiate away retroactive pay for those who left. Had the district negotiators been providing CSCE members with more equitable and timely increases, so many of us would not have been left out. I, along with many others, needed to make a move to help get ourselves in a better financial situation to stop the hemorrhaging of our financial well-being. When we left, we knew that a resolution to the negotiations would come and we would finally receive the back pay that we rightfully earned and deserve. So many of us had been counting on getting that back pay that we rightfully earned and deserve. Never in a million years did we think the district would essentially stab us in the back and deny us retroactive pay. We do understand this is a huge expense to the district, but this could have been avoided had the classified wage increases been properly addressed in a more timely manner. Now, not only have we been shunned and betrayed by the district and the union we worked with, we don't qualify for the compensation for working during the pandemic like so many frontline workers did. The district is clearly trying to save a buck on the backs of those who were on the front lines during this global pandemic during the past two-plus years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And it looks like we don't have any comments on.
I have a card for them.
Oh, you put action items? Did you want to?
Oh, I don't, I don't know the difference at all. So it is.
Which item did you want to speak? Do you know what number, do you know which number it was? Because it's an action item and it's in the consent as well.
We have you, we have, we have you coming up in a second. So, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, so now?
Oh, I don't know. What's it?
Do you want to talk, do you want to talk specifically about the salary schedules, Jeannie, or just in general?
In general, CSCE and salary.
Eighty, twelve hundred.
Okay.
You want to come up now?
Yeah.
Calendar calendar. I apologize. Sorry for the confusion.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Preitzel. I'm bilingual resource teacher at McDowell. I've taught in the district for about 16 years. I've been a teacher for about 26 years in three different districts. Normally, I'm up here, or often I'm up here talking about the teacher salaries, but, and I don't want to give that any less emphasis, but tonight, I really want to speak to our classified people at our sites, in our ditches, that behind the scenes do the brunt of a lot of the heavy lifting that is so essential. And I'm feeling it a lot this year because we have a shortage of them. We have, we have an ongoing shortage of them. And what happens, which maybe a lot of you guys don't realize, is when we have a shortage of our classified staff, then our teachers and our principals are getting pulled into doing a lot of that work. And ultimately, that trickles down to our kids. Last year, I spent about a third of the school year doing lunch duty, a position that pays about $15 an hour. It was probably your most expensive yard duty in this district. And yard duty positions are open always, and they're open always because you don't pay enough. And if you want to have safe schools, and if you want to have, to keep a person in there that kids can make a connection with, you got to pay people a reasonable amount and. of money. I am in daily contact with all sorts of people in classified positions and I feel their stress. I'm excited that they're getting a raise, but please don't let this be the end. We need to keep these people in these positions. We want them there long-term. Those are the people that make the school work. And when they quit and retire or just can't keep going and they can't afford to live in this town, which is becoming increasingly expensive, every single person in this community suffers, especially our kids. So yay for the raise. I'm really sad to hear that those people that, that resigned didn't get that retro pay. That, that hurts and I'm sure it's really hard on them. But please keep it going. We're not done. We gotta, we gotta keep it going. We gotta keep appreciating these people and we gotta keep them in their positions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments about anything?
Hi. I just had a question, just a clarification about the, the two different materials that were, about the, sorry. The, which one was it? The CTE. Is that on here?
I thought we had all that.
Oh, is that the action? Oh, yeah, three. So 11.1.3. The narrative that's on there says that the new, that the grant will be in the service of the CTE pathways throughout the district. And, but then the letter confirming the amount of money that they're donating, that the CTE Foundation is giving us, says that it's in transforming Casa Grande. So I just wanted to clarify that, that this grant is really for everybody. If it is.
Yes, we, we had a, Matthew and I had a conversation with the CEO of the CTE Foundation, and they really want to support the entire district and understanding the importance of aligning our programs at both of our high schools and making sure that there's equitable opportunities for both high schools. And so the position is meant to service the entire district. As I laid out, the kind of general work that they'll be doing, we'll be focusing around the, the work for the entire district.
Good, thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that. Is there any plan to incorporate the other three high schools and maybe the adult school at some point? Is that on the radar?
Yes, so the, the goal with that administrative position is to ensure that it's K-12 and that the alternative schools as well as continuation schools have as much opportunities to pursue CTE as well.
Any other questions, comments? Nope. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Comments from the public on action items? So we can reopen the chat. If you have any comments on any of the action items, please put your first and last name in the chat. I think we can close it. All right. First up, AV361.
I move to stay in hybrid for another 30 days or whatever we're allowed to do.
I second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Approval of the tentative agreement to the collective bargaining agreement between the Petaluma City Schools and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts and California School Employees Association.
I move to approve the tentative agreement.
I second.
Any questions or comments, anyone?
It's exciting we got here.
Yeah, I'm glad we could do this. We're glad.
Thank you to everybody on all sides for making it possible.
All right.
Yeah, I just, I want to commend the, both, both negotiating teams on CSCA side and district side for coming up with this agreement. It amounts to about a 17.25% increase for classified staff, much deserved.
Absolutely.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And 17.25% over three years.
All right. Resolution 2223-07, declaring September 15th through October 15th as Latino Heritage Month.
I move to approve Resolution 223-07.
I'll second.
Someone, is someone going to read it?
I stole your line, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's usually your line.
It's not my line.
No, you always say, someone want to read it to record.
I don't have it. I don't have it in front of me. You do.
I'll, I'll read it. Oh, we should vote on it first. All in favor? Aye. All right. Whereas Latino Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions that generations of Latino Americans have made to American history, society, and culture. And whereas Latino Americans have contributed significantly in United States history through their contributions in sciences, arts, government, and commerce. And whereas Latino Heritage Month is also a time to look at and celebrate the current contributions of Latino Americans. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Latino Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988 on the approval of Public Law 100-402. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas the History, Social Science Framework for California Public Schools, kindergarten through grade 12 states that the history curriculum of community, state, religion, region, nation, and world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups and must be integrated at every level. Now therefore, be it resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts Board of Education proclaimed September 15th, 2022 to October 15th, 2022 as Latino Heritage Month.
And if anyone is wondering why it is a 15th to a 15th and not a first to a 31st, it is because many countries in Latin America celebrate their independence on September 15th. Guatemala, El Salvador, Nicaragua, three that are on the 15th. Mexico is on the 16th and a couple other countries are on the 17th. And I believe Belize is on the 21st. So that's to kick off.
I didn't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. You should be a guest speaker on one of these classes. Yes. No, seriously, I did not know that.
Me neither.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Approval Resolution 2223-08 of the Board of Education for Safe Storage Parent Guardian Notification.
Is Mia online?
She is online.
Like Mia should move this to action.
Yes.
Mia, are you still there? Oh, yeah, she's there.
Oh, wait, yeah, can she? I don't know.
She can speak on it, but I don't think she can technically move. So I will move to approve.
Shouting out, giving out powers to people.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
And I have the resolution in front of me.
Okay. If anyone wants to make any comments, Mia, if you're still there and unmuted, if, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on this at all, or Julian as well. It's about the safe storage for guns and parental notification. You don't have to. If you have any comments about it.
Can Mia unmute herself, Dave?
Oh.
Okay.
I don't know if she's still there.
I have no comments. Thank you, though.
You were excellent at the meeting, I want to say.
All right.
Resolution of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California for Safe Storage Parent Guardian Notification. Whereas evidence strongly suggests that secure firearm storage is an essential component to any effective strategy to keep schools and students safe. Whereas an estimated 4.6 million American children live in households with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. Whereas every year, roughly 350 children under the age of 18 unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else, equating to roughly one intentional shooting per day, and 70% of these incidents take place inside a home. Whereas another 1,200 children and teens die by gun suicide each year, most often using guns belonging to a family member. Whereas in incidents of gun violence on school grounds, 75% of active shooters are current students or recent graduates, and up to 80% of shooters under the age of 18 obtain their guns from their own home, a relative's home, or from friends. Whereas research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with up to an 85% reduction in the risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Whereas across the country, lawmakers, community members, and local leaders are working together to implement public awareness campaigns such as the Be Smart Program, which is endorsed by the National PTA and which encourages secure gun storage practices and highlights the public safety risks of unsecured guns. Whereas, whereas school districts across the country have begun to proactively send materials home to parents and guardians, informing them of applicable firearms, sorry, firearm storage laws and firearm secure storage best practices. Whereas keeping students and teachers and staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at each of our school sites. Whereas California State Law, AB452, requires adults to securely store their firearms where a child is likely, where child is likely to gain access to the firearm. Whereas starting honor before July 1st, 2023, California State Law, AB452, requires school districts to notify families of the requirement to securely store their firearms. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board directs the superintendent and staff to update the student handbook data confirmation to include information about parents' legal obligations regarding the secure storage of firearms. Be it finally resolved that the board and the superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to inform district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes.
Right, thank you, Ellen. Okay, next up, comments from the public on discussion information items. We only have one. It's the Williams Quarterly Settlement, but we'll reopen the chat for 30 seconds. Okay, we can close it. All right. Jason.
I'm happy to report that there were no complaints.
And we're happy to hear it.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on. Future, oh, did you have something? Oh, sorry. Future business? Anyone have any? No? Julian, is there anything for future business that you were wanting to see that you haven't already mentioned previously? No?
Mia?
Oh, yeah, Mia.
I just wanted to bring it up just a little bit. I'm sorry if there's any background music and babysitting, but we were talking just a little bit about the lunch ladies in the line or in like the cafeteria during school. So for PHS, I just noticed that, especially as someone who likes to go in and get breakfast during the mornings, during break, I noticed that the lines are just excessively long. And the other day, I was at least five minutes late to my class because the lines were so incredibly long. Typically, we have, sometimes we'll have three lines open and that really helps get kids moving and like through the lines. But a lot of the times in the lines, they're just so long and there's so many kids trying to get in and just like, it's, it's just a really long line and I can't get to class on time. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Nope. All right. With that, we are adjourned.